Okay, we are going to call this October 23rd, 2023 Savannah Board of Education meeting to order. Welcome everybody. Call the roll.
Ms. Hoffman?
Here.
Ms. Conklin?
Here.
Mr. Fowler?
Here.
Mrs. Johnson?
Here.
And Mrs. Glavette is absent.
Okay. Stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are starting out the evening with you, Dr. Motley.
Thank you, Ms. Conklin. I'm actually going to forego my superintendent's report tonight because item number three is a presentation from the collaborative. We have Dave here, who will be providing a presentation and an update on our swing schools athletic facilities. So, welcome, Dave.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me. Just quick, okay. As Veronica said, wanted to give the board an update of what, starting off with the athletic piece that we've been working on. Met with the Athletic Facilities Committee last week. We've got another follow-up meeting coming up here shortly. Wanted to give the board an update and answer any questions on some of the progress and some of the projects that you're going to be seeing underway pretty soon here. So, agenda tonight, if you want to talk about Northview, talk about the work we're doing there with the track, bleachers, and then Southview with the new football turf field as well as the new track there. And then talk about some of the bidding scenarios and the approach to the construction that we've been talking about with multiple different bidding scenarios, trying to get the district as much flexibility as we can and making some decisions with people. So with that, I'll jump into the Northview scope of work. So on the left, of course, as everyone's aware, that's the entire campus of Northview. To the right is just a little bit of a blow-up of the athletic facilities that we're going to be talking, specifically tonight around the turf football and lacrosse stadium field. We're going to be talking about replacing both sets of bleachers, home and away. We're going to talk about putting in a new track in there that doesn't exist today. Once that track goes in, that's going to push the bleachers, especially on the home side, which you'll see in some renderings. So, trying to make the combinations for that as well. And then we'll show you some 3D images that you'll see what the final product will look like, and then maybe some of the challenges that we're working through right now as we kind of go through the entire process. So, there'll be some blow-ups. This is a little bit difficult to see, but again, that existing turf field that you've got there today at Northview is going to remain. The dark black is going to be a U-8 lane track that's going to go around the perimeter. Talking about modifying the end zones to do additional track events that you don't have today. So, kind of like in the north end zone there, you see the black. We're going to be removing some of that turf of the high jump area there, and then to the south D-zone area, long jump, triple jump, high jump. We've talked about a number of different activities there, so we're still working with the athletic director. And then you'll see in another page that we have, the track really extends much further than kind of where your fencing is and things like that are today. So, we'll have new fencing that'll go around the entire perimeter of the track. Trying to keep clear of your light poles for your football and your baseball, which is a little bit of a challenge, as you'll see, because the new bleachers are so large. We're running into that. And then your existing concession stand, again, the existing home side concession stand, due to the size of the bleachers that we're going to be putting in, we'll need to be relocating or thinking of something different for the home side concession stand. In the short term, maybe a temporary home. Long-term, that'll be part of the full athletic master plan of what happens with that. Visitor concession stand will remain with the new bleachers. You'll see that as well, that that's not affected. And then kind of to the south of the track and the football field, we're talking about shot put, discus events. So, we're starting to show some areas in the brown for shot put. And then that large green area there, to the most south of the plan would be your discus area that we've been talking about. So... This is a drawing that we shared with the committee last week, but just to start to point out some of the impacts as I was describing earlier. So, the red is going to be the new. So, the red is the new track, the new bleachers, home to the top of the page, visitors to the bottom page. We rotated it just so you can see it a little bit easier. I've kind of have some dark black circles around the areas I talked about. So, to the left, that left, there's like a blue box with the black circle around. That's your existing home concession stand. So, see if we're trying to, we're trying to match the seating count at Southview. So, we're targeting about 2,700 seats, which I think is significantly more than what you have there today. Those existing bleachers that you have there today are in need of repair, significant repair. I know that, you know, it's kind of, adds age, adds life, not a lot of handrails, not a lot of safety features. So, all of this will improve that dramatically. Just give a much better experience for visitors, people attending the games. The other two circles where the bleachers are shown, the circle right above the blue box, that's your existing light pole for your baseball softball. So, we need to work around that as well to kind of get the seating count of the size that we want. To the right, dark kind of black circle there, when originally out the bleachers like they are, some of the foundations were dropping down into the batting cages of the softball. So, we're modifying that currently. We're going to notch the bleachers there to work around your existing batting cages, so that's not affected. And then the far-right circle, black circle, is really just showing the runoff lanes for the track. You know, it's a little bit hard to see, but you see you put a new concrete pathway in around softball. That track is almost going to go right to that, just to give you some context of how much larger this is going to expand. Where the home bleachers are shown today, that will cover the entire asphalt drive that is there that goes from the baseball softball complex to where the track, the turf field is today. You'll see that in some renderings as well. So, just some things we've been working through. Think we've got solutions for all of them, but didn't want to call the board's attention to those, just in case you get questions about some of these things. And as the old bleachers come down, the new bleachers start to build up. So, talking about how large the new bleachers are. This is an image, a 3D image of what the new bleachers will look like. You'll see some other ones, but we've been working with the fire department, talked with him about safety. We've kind of got the bleachers laid out so you can get emergency vehicles underneath them. We need about 20-foot wide clearance, 16-foot tall for a fire truck and ambulance, which all that'll afford you. You'll see some other images of this as well. But, start to see, you know, the track off to the left, you see the existing football light pole, kind of to the immediate left, so we couldn't extend the bleachers over too much farther there without getting in significant causes of relocating those lights. But, with this option, with notching that corner, we're out of the batting cages, as I mentioned in the previous one, and you still have kind of clear access underneath the bleachers. And the fire department has access further down the site to turn around should they need to. Just some of the items that we've been talking about with the facility committee and the athletic director, about what's going to go on and what events are going to be held, and just what some of the amenities that you might not have out there today that you're going to have. So, this is just a little bit of a cut-through of what the new track is to the top of the page. But, you see some of the events may be more notable there with the long jump, triple jump, high jump area, where the shot put and discus are going to be, and then that southern portion, and how that impacts some of those existing fields, fence line. That existing toilet room that's in the yellow, that's offered today, that will remain intact. Your locker room facility, kind of in the upper right-hand corner, that's in yellow as well, that will all remain like it is today. Again, we're exploring some other options, some other possibilities through the Athletic Master Plan that might change or add on or modify some of these things in the future, but kind of working through that plan right now. You know, there's a lot of different track systems out there. So, we've had discussions, and I think this goes back to what I mentioned a little bit earlier with our construction approach. So, as we put these projects out to bid here in the next few weeks, there's kind of three levels of urethane track systems that are out there. There's kind of BS-100, which is a buying-in product that's just kind of a base of design. There's, you know, that's like a junior high, high school level. The BS-300 is a really good high school level. And then the BS-1000 is more of an upper high school, lower college level. And there's price ramifications of all of those, but there also are extended warranties and then additional replacement factors that go into those. So, we had a good discussion with the facilities committee that, you know, once we bid this and get the actual numbers in, it might make some sense to spend a little bit more money now, so you get a longer warranty and a longer replacement value down the road. So, you know, some of the additional costs that you might be paying now will pay for itself down the future, but you don't have to replace your track in another seven years. So, then we're going to get the, we're going to bid all these out as alternates, so that the district has all that information, and then make a much more informed decision then, once we have pricing back from the bleachers, the track, and the turf, so we know kind of a whole picture of what all of these are going to cost for the district. So, just give a little snapshot of the cost of each of the track surfaces, and then that's kind of that first number, that 42, 68, or 72. And then the additional costs, the $450,000 is going to be for all the new pavement that's going to go underneath it, the new curbing, the demolition of what is there. That's kind of captured in that $450,000. We're going to look at options too with color, especially when we get to Southview. Standard colors are black or red. So, black would fit nicely potentially with Northview, but we've also talked about the idea of in the exchange zones, maybe putting in gold or yellow. That comes with a little bit of a cost upgrade, but it does give you a much more branded kind of track, much more visually. A peacing track, again, it's about $40,000 to add those yellow exchange zones, and then about another 50 to put a color retention to it, which is that color lasts the duration of the track and doesn't fade. So, again, all those will be billed out and bid out as alternates, so we have that information before making a decision. On the bleachers, so just a little bit more of a blow-up of, and these aren't the final designs. We're still tweaking them as we're working with the facilities committee and doing our own kind of investigation. But, visitor's side is going to get completely replaced, about, almost 1,000 seats, about 972 seats on that side. Have an ADA ramp, so we're going to flip the ramp. So, this side is showing the ramp closer to the visitors' concession stands. We're going to flip the ramp, so as people are walking around the outside of the track, they would enter into that ramp immediately. So, if someone had accessibility needs, they could easily get up those visitor bleachers. To the bottom of the page will be the home bleachers. So, get about 2,700 seats. There's an option to do chairbacks. So, we're going to be, again, that'll be an alternate that we price out to put about 250 chairs there with backs that you can potentially use for some fundraising measures. And then, of course, everything will be fully ADA accessible, ADA ramps, a lot of guardrails, a lot of companion seating. We're also going to be putting in a new press box. So, that's kind of that open white space at the top of the visitor or the home bleachers. So, branding press block, press box with windows, and kind of reattaching some of the systems that you have there today. It's another kind of shot from the backside of the bleachers. We were talking through, this is a potential shot of looking from the field. We've talked about colors, so I think we still have some kind of final decisions to make with the facilities, athletic facilities committee on the colors. This was just one option, potentially of kind of rotating the colors. Maybe if you do the chairbacks, those are in another color, or maybe do some branding on the front. It kind of gives you the shot where you can see the light pole for baseball, all that's notched around. The bleachers up in the upper left-hand corner, you see the football lighting that's kind of, you know, stopping us as far as we can go with the new bleachers. To the far left, and then in the upper right, you see that notch, and that's that notch to keep the structure out of the batting cages. So, before I go, any further, any questions on what we're going to move in?
I have just one question. Good to see the ADA ramps. What about seating for ADA?
Yep, those are all in the front. So, let me get back to the area kind of directly in front of the ramp. I don't know if you can kind of see right through there. So, that'll be all the ADA seating with their companion seating will all be in the front, and then we've got those for the visitor's side as well.
And ADA, you know, increase in handicap parking?
I was part of...
That's not part of this?
Not part of this.
Okay.
So, just saying.
Personal break in your life.
Just saying.
Close your hair.
I understand.
The concession stand, you said that's something we're working on to do with this project?
I think long-term, we've talked about as part of the long-term vision of the Athletic Master Plan, specifically for Northview, there's been discussions about where's the right location for that. So, that won't be part of this project, might be part of a future project.
So, next football season, we're not going to have a home concession stand?
We've got softball, so there were some talks about using the softball concession stand. There might be something temporarily they have to do for next football season if softball is an option while we work through the Athletic Master Plan, maybe come up with the final home, the right one for where concessions wants to be, make sure it ties in to everything else that you might want to accomplish there.
And as we work through the Athletic Master Plan, if it's something that we determine and can get done based on where the final layout would be, I think it could still be done. It's just not with this initial bid out.
I guess I just want to, my concern is several organizations rely on concessions to fund their programming, and it's a pretty huge portion of their funding. So, it would be a huge blow to not have a good home concession stand next season. I know Band and Orchestra is one I know of, and I know other organizations use it for other events, so just think about how it'd be being impacted.
Yeah, big movie scenario is going to have to move with the track extending out so far. You had about five or six feet maybe left in front of that existing concession stand.
Right.
Even if the bleachers didn't hit it.
Right.
It would have needed to be relocated, probably in any of that.
Initially, I was picturing, why don't we just put it in the building? Because, you know, there's that Spiritware store that's the old concession stand. And I was thinking, let's just put it in there. But, now seeing how big that is, you gotta have where the people can go. So, I get it.
It's a really, really tight, really, really tight site.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions on Northview? That was the press box. So, I think that showed kind of a close shot, pretty similar to what you have in Southview as well. We're limited by square footage, so this is going to be smaller than your existing one. You can only go up to 500 square feet with any new press box. If you go over 500 square feet, you gotta provide an elevator. So, this, any new press box that you see at any new stadium is going to be this similar size, which is right at that 500 square feet. You still get space for home coaches, visitor coaches that are separate, and then kind of the media area, announcing area in the middle. But, that 500 square feet is, to put another elevator, put an elevator in, we'd be talking some hundreds of thousands of dollars to do that, which I know would be a big challenge. So, Southview, similar, you know, overall plan to the left, a blow-up to the right. So, here at Southview, we're talking about, the bleachers are in good shape. Those are going to remain. We're not touching those. The track is at the end of its life, probably been at the end of its life. And where the finish line is on the visitor's side today, we want to flip that so that the finish line is on the home side. And then take out the natural grass field that's there today and put in an artificial turf grass, or artificial turf field, I'm sorry. And you'll see, we're not doing a full turf. We're suggesting the southern D-zone, which is right outside the end zone, become the high jump area. So, that would be part of the new track surface that doesn't exist today. I think there may be some asphalt there. And then potentially putting some athletic rents to the north D-zone as well. So, those are kind of the two big components of what we're doing in Southview. Again, just a little bit of a blow-up. We've got a lot of the timing systems and things like that out there today, because you're using it that way. We're just going to be relocating that, relocating power, relocating data, so those timing systems are at the correct location. And then you'll have all the other track events that you have there today as well. We'll be resurfacing all of those. Similar track, new track surfaces, these are a little bit less, only because you have an existing base there today. So, with any of these new track systems, part of the project will be milling up about an inch and a half to two inches of what is there today to get it down to your original base. And that would be installing new track system over the top of that. So, that's why you see these costs are slightly less. The milling cost for brand-new asphalt is about half, so that's the big difference here. This is a little bit bigger than Northview. I think we're about 5,700 square yards at Northview. We're about 6,500 here, primarily, I think, to that D-zone. If you look at Northview, it's kind of a modified curve as well, which makes the track a little bit smaller. These turning radiuses are larger at Southview, which makes that square yard by a little bit. So, still, we're going to take a similar approach. You know, I think base bid, you know, we've talked about black. As an alternate, we've talked about potentially doing a light gray track with orange exchange zone. So, a little bit similar to this. Again, that comes with a little bit of a cost premium. So, we're going to bid that out kind of separately, so we understand what that is before making a final determination. But, again, that'll add some branding into the track system at Southview. Looking at football, we showed these two options, and then I got some feedback today from athletic director, I think is different. So, this is just to throw it out there to get some initial feedback. I think the orange end zones were maybe the preferred. We're going to get the right font, the right branded font in there. I think the orange end zones with some of the feedback, wanting to make the cougar head bigger. So, we're still kind of working through. These were just two options we came up with. I think during that facilities meeting in a week or so, we're going to have some updated renderings to get some feedback before that's kind of shown, for sure. And that's what we'll have to bid. Any questions on Southview?
Get rid of the bees.
What's that?
A lot of bees. A lot of the turf will get rid of them.
And this will be interesting, because to do a turf, you gotta flatten it, right? So, now you've got its crown, so there's going to be a lot of soil. We've talked with Ray about keeping that on-site for other areas in the district. They might even level off some areas. But, to have a contractor truck all that out, that's a large expense. So, glad you can use it around the rest of your district to save, to help those sites, and then that saves a lot of heat. So, from a bidding standpoint, construction approach, you know, Northview and Southview are almost on identical paths, other than we've got the bleachers to deal with in Northview, and then the track and turf to deal with in Southview. So, our intention is, you know, after tonight, answering any questions, getting at least a demo of the bleachers, of the existing bleachers, and then the new bleachers out here that will advertise next Sunday. And then that'll be out to bid for about two and a half weeks. So, the hope is we get those bids back. And in most of these items, yeah, we would be potentially back at the November board meeting with recommendations on all of these projects, bleacher demo, the new bleachers, the tracks at both schools, and then the turf at both schools. We're going to stagger the track and the turf about a week. So, we're going to bid the bleachers. About a week after that, we're going to bid the track and the turf. The bleachers are the longest lead item. So, to get those here and installed for next football season, we've been told by multiple people, they would, they need a purchase order. They need something in writing by, right after next year. And that way, that gets them in the docket, gets the chalk drawings going. Because all of this, the plan right now is to have an operational for the first football game at both schools next August.
Will the installation of the bleachers coincide with the softball and baseball seasons? Is that going to be an access issue?
There'll be, yes, we'll have to, through the spring, it's going to be a little bit of a mess out there.
Baseball and softball will be able to play?
Continue to play, yeah. There might just be some temporary routing. Lacrosse, we've talked about maybe potentially finding some alternate fields for Northview for lacrosse, because the track's going to be completely torn up. The bleachers are going to be gone. There's, you're not going to want anybody playing any sports at Northview. So, there's been some discussions already about finding an alternate place to play lacrosse. The track season in the spring, same here. Both of those are, Southview track is going to be offline. So, I think there's already been discussions going on through the athletic directors and others to talk about where those might go and how the schedule's going to look. But, track and lacrosse will be in anything over the summer. I don't know if you've got any camps or any of that stuff, but those will also be pretty much off limits. It'll be a push to get all of this done for football, but I think we feel pretty confident getting out as early as we are that we can be there. Any questions on this discussion? So, next month's board meeting, we'll be sharing all of the costs and probably recommendations based on all the options that we did, potential suggestions to move forward with. We did start the entire Athletic Master Plan kind of discussion, so this was just kind of initial thoughts and comments. I think we're going to have continued discussions. But, you know, in Northview, a new home for concessions, additional restrooms, future locker rooms, where we talked for the short term and the long term. You know, there's the future relationships that you've got currently, and, you know, how those might look down the future. You know, in Southview, we've talked about baseball improvements. We talked about additional maintenance needs that you might have, some expansion there. And then had a much larger discussion on what other sports, what other things should we be thinking about? Pickleball, esports, what are we doing with the junior highs? Timberstones, Illinois, who has a track, the other two don't. You know, other potential land acquisitions down, you know, down the road we might want to think about. Talked a lot about health and wellness, how that's definitely a growing trend, and that's not going to go away, and how there could be, could we look at possibly, you know, some of those health and wellness facilities at both campus or reserve and buying facilities. So, again, I think that'll all be part of additional discussions with the Athletic Master Plan as we kind of continue down that path and work through those things with the committee, and hopefully come back, you know, next year at some point with some kind of final recommendations and a final plan for the athletic side of things as we continue to talk. So, I thought that was kind of the end of my update for the season. Are there any other comments or questions I can address?
Thank you. Thanks, and appreciate it. See you next year.
Okay, yeah, we are, yes.
4.1. I recommend the approval of item 4.1, which is commendations from our Board of Education. For tonight, we are recognizing some Southview High School students who scored a 26 and above. Their September 9th ACT, and those names are listed. And the young ladies and young men did a great job, so we commend them on their performance.
Okay, any comments? Call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Okay, we are at our first opportunity for public participation for items that are on our agenda, and we have none. So, we are moving on to you, Mr. Coe.
All right. So, I've got a few recommendations for the month in consent. I have 6.1 minutes of September 18th and October 9th, treasures report for the month, and then my update for the month. You know, we'll have our forecast next month. That presentation will happen. I'm getting wrapped up on that. And then 6.3 is just that monthly approval for purchase orders. 6.4, we started this a few years ago to have a severance fund. So, that is our annual transfer for severances for the, for our severance fund and Fund 35. And then appropriation changes. There was a few, OHSA in the state wanted us to go back to something where we used to do, where we put, Jim and Chris will host tournaments, like OHSA sectional district tournaments. It used to be put in a different fund than last year. It didn't have to be, and then now it's back. So, I needed to appropriate for those funds in Fund 22. So, then I took the opportunity and just looked at all of our grants. We had some carryovers, things like that. So, I tidied up those appropriations to try to get them knocked out in one meeting, so I don't have to do that every month. So, that's 6.5.
I'm going to approve on concession base inside of 6.1 through 6.
Okay, any questions? Call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
All right, we're back to you, Dr. Motley.
Thank you. I recommend item 7.1. This is the approval of the following policies that are listed, anywhere from conflict of interest, notice of meetings, third-grade reading guarantee, which is aligning to our law in Ohio that was changed. We have immunization, use of medications, just a variety of policies there, seeking approval.
I'll second. Okay, any questions? Call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 7.2. This is an agreement with ProMedica Shared Services that allow our students to shadow with ProMedica
Greg?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. All right, Mr. Tepnerzky?
Thank you. I'll recommend items 8.1 through 8.3 on a consent agenda basis. 8.1 licensed active duty. 8.2 is licensed unpaid leave of absence. 8.3 are licensed substitutes. I'll move for approval on a consent agenda basis, items 8.1 to 8.3. I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Greg?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll recommend items 9.1 through 9.3 on a consent agenda basis. 9.1 is our wellness coordinator stipend, strand a hand. 9.2 are classified new hires. 9.3 are classified personal changes.
I'll move for approval on a consent agenda basis, items 9.1 through 9.3.
I'll second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll recommend items 10.1 and 10.2 on a consent agenda basis. 10.1 are supplemental positions for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year and 10.2 is an athletic volunteer for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. I'll move for approval on a consent agenda basis, items 10.1 and 10.2.
I'll second. Any questions? Call the roll.
Greg?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll recommend items 10.1 and 10.2 on a consent agenda basis. 10.1 are supplemental positions for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year and 10.2 is an athletic volunteer for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. I'll move for approval on a consent agenda basis, items 10.1 and 10.2.
I'll second. Any questions? Call the roll.
Greg?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
All right, we now are ready for board reports. Greg?
Um, yeah, so almost a week ago now, I always have my sage meeting right after the meeting, we do the reports, so it's kind of a month old, but the Halloween event we have at Santa Ana Terrace started last weekend and this weekend. If anyone's familiar, if everyone knows, they've purchased the Woodland Cemetery display that was always up and had that up at Santa Ana Terrace, and they just pulled themselves on around that. And then a couple of weeks ago, I think it was, we had the ribbon cutting for Burnham Park, so that is now finished and open. Do you want to talk about foundation? Uh, so Julie and I were at the foundation meeting and just talked a lot about getting, you know, kind of getting organized, working with the alumni, trying to build our alumni database, which is great.
So sign up.
So, yeah, alumni, sign up.
And it's even, if you're not an alumni, but you're just connected to the schools, still sign up. So you're going to be like that, sign up?
Right. Uh, they talked about creating a community newsletter and then working on advertisements of the football stadiums and schools. And then Julie and I were also at the athletic facility committee meeting that they just were working on. I'm good.
And we have foundation meeting Thursday.
Yes. And a foundation meeting Thursday, yes.
Okay, I had to go to Southview, She Kills Monsters, if anybody got a chance to see it, but actually, they did a great job. Very entertaining. Yeah, it was very, yeah. Great. So many prevention alliance, Red Rhythm League is coming up, some elementary schools, it's like make up the choices. Our big day is, this is the twenty-eighth at Cogburn, Savannah King. They're having, they did a film festival last year, You've Caught the Noise at Ward's, which was a huge success. So it's junior high, high school kids are a big focus. So they're giving out prizes, so if you're able to go to that. It is November ninth at Ward's. Hot Cogburn is live for those of you that run. February twenty-fourth at Goldlander. That's it.
Okay, I, communications, we have the district newsletter going out soon, right? And then we had a great Savannah parent organization meeting, S S P O, last week, where we learned, great presentation on the I-Ready system. And I think that's all I have. And Joe was at both of those things, or involved both of those things, so.
Yes. All right. I attended a strategic plan meeting on social emotional wellness, and we're working with Dr. Brandon Wood from University of Toledo, looking at the best method of screening for social emotional health and then how to proceed if there are some red flags. So that's where we're at with that. We're going to be having another concentrated, several hour meeting here in the future. Also, just met with Celine Community Services, we met last week. A fun and happy announcement, Woodrow Preschool went from a one-star to a four-star level. It also may be up to a five-star with some additional data that's going to be presented that apparently was not. So everyone is very thrilled with that. Also, doing a present, looked at a presentation of new board candidates, trying to up the number of candidates or board members, I should say, for SCS. We can have a total of twenty-five on that board, and currently we have, I think, approximately twelve.